I'd like to call or order the Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, March 6th, 2018. Aaron, would you lead us in a pledge, please?
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pont?
Here.
Commissioner Monet?
Here.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Present.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Here.
Chair Kistner?
Here.
The next item is the public forum. This is an opportunity for the public to address the Commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on the agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the Commission may not engage in discussion or take any action on matters not described on this agenda. Please subvert the time limit of three minutes. Is there any public comment? Public comment closed. Next is consent items. Members of the Commission or the public may ask that any item be considered individually for purposes of considering alternative action for extended discussion or for public comment. Unless this is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions. 4.1 is design review exemption to make minor cosmetic changes to the exterior of the residence at 1309 Hillview Place in the medium-density residential district. 4.2 is request for a design review exemption for a residential remodel of a five-bedroom home located at 280 Pope Street in the medium-density district.
Chair Kistner's staff would like to pull 4.2 to make a clarification.
All right, fine. All right, do I hear a motion to approve 4.1?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Planning Intern Joseph Brokov is going to make the clarification on the staff report and resolution for item 4.2.
Good evening, Commissioners. So, yeah, I'm here to make a couple of clarifications and amend the resolution just a bit to reflect a mistake on the plan set, or not showing the plan set. There's a mistake on the plan set that has a direct bearing on the scope of the project. And if you look at plan set, how long is it going to take? A1 on the existing floor plan, it shows Bedroom 3 is missing a closet and therefore it would be considered a den or an office, and it's not a bedroom or a closet according to the city, except in the case of water neutrality, which does consider offices, dens, TV rooms, et cetera, to be bedrooms regardless of whether they include a closet or not. So while Bedroom 3 may not technically be a bedroom, it would still be subject as a den or office to a water demand analysis should the applicant, for instance, be attempting to add this type of room to an existing floor plan. Therefore, the applicant is seeking or asking for the city to include this factor into the resolution so that when he essentially brings back the fifth bedroom in his, in Phase 2 of the project, which is explained in the plans, that he won't be subject to a water demand analysis. So staff is therefore recommending that the Planning Commission approve the amended resolution for a design review exemption with the following changes to condition number 34 in the resolution. The new condition will read, "As part of the conditions of the project, the city shall memorialize the residence as a four-bedroom with an office-den. This will be considered in future renovations or additions to the house as part of the water neutrality analysis requirement." So basically, all I have.
Is there any questions, staff?
I have a question. So, isn't the current number of bedrooms, though, five?
Yes.
So shouldn't we determine that it currently is a five-bedroom? I mean, you don't want to...
The floor plan identifies five bedrooms. It's actually a four-bedroom house with an office. Bedroom 3 does not include a closet, so it doesn't meet the building code definition of a bedroom. However, for the purpose of water neutrality, offices, dens, TV rooms, et cetera, are looked at similarly to a bedroom. It's somewhat semantics, except if the applicant comes back to construct another bedroom at some point. Without this memorializing the current situation, they would essentially have lost a bedroom under the water neutrality requirements.
Okay.
But it's saying...
But we're, but I'm sorry, but we just learned that we're talking about memorializing four-bedrooms, not memorializing five-bedrooms.
The house was identified as a five-bedroom house in the staff report and the resolution. We're just clarifying it's a four-bedroom with an office.
Four-bedroom with an office, and so therefore they will be able, for water neutrality purposes, it'll still be a four-bedroom.
With an office.
With an office, okay.
But that seems really arbitrary. You could go either way. You could either go by the definition called for in the water neutrality policy, or you could go by the building code. So what was the motivation to choose the building code over the water neutrality? That seems like a more, a very pressing thing.
The applicant's asking to memorialize it under the water neutrality requirements.
Well, that's, it would be counted as a bedroom if it were being memorialized under that requirement. So why are we memorializing under the four-bedroom instead of the five-bedroom? I don't know if that's what Commissioner Knudsen was wondering.
A couple things, Bobby, that I can tell. One, the zoning code defines what a bedroom is. This room does not meet the definition under the zoning code. Also, if you look at the building code, right? The building code for a bedroom says you have a closet, you have at least one exit window, and it requires certain fire code requirements fall under a bedroom that do not fall under an office. So a bedroom is different than an office. But because people sometimes put a bed in an office and say, "This is five bedrooms," right, for water analysis requirements, they include the space of an office or a den. They treat it as if it is a bedroom, even though, under the building code and under the zoning code, it is not.
Okay, that makes sense. I'm just noticing that this is at least setting a precedence for me, that the zoning code and the building code trump the water neutrality definition. And that's, I don't really have a problem with that at this point, but I'm just noticing.
And I'd like to suggest an alternative, if I may, to the condition that perhaps will be less confusing. I think we might say, "As part of the conditions of the project, although the existing residence has four bedrooms and a den, for purposes of present and future water neutrality analysis, the city shall memorialize the residence as a five-bedroom structure."
That makes sense.
And then we're clearly describing the status quo in building and zoning code terms. We're explaining what we're actually doing, which is memorializing the water use calculation, which treats the den the same as a bedroom. And then I believe we are addressing the applicant's concern without leaving a potentially confusing record.
You're here.
I also had a question. I know there's a half-bedroom addition, I mean, a half-bath addition. And I know bathrooms aren't considered in the water neutrality. On the other hand, I've read that if there's any new water faucet or delivery system for water, that it is counted. So I'm confused, and I'm asking for some clarification.
The applicant is here and probably could speak a little better to that.
The question would be for Public Works Director Smithy, as she administers the water neutrality requirements.
It's by bedrooms or office or dens. It's not by the number of bathrooms, because you have the same number of occupants, they're going to be using the same number of bathrooms, regardless if you have 10 bathrooms in one bedroom or 10 bathrooms in three bedrooms.
I understand, but it says there that you will look at the water neutrality policy if you add a faucet or some delivery system for water. In another place, that is stated in our rules, too. So that's confusing, if, I think, did you find it?
Yes, I did.
Yeah.
Yeah, see what you're talking about.
So I just don't understand how to understand that.
Yes, yes. What you're referring to is, "The attic in Bedroom 5 will be configured as two bedrooms, a play area, pass-through, and bathroom. Once this phase is completed, the residence will be four bedrooms, three bathrooms, and one half-bathroom."
That's the project description from the applicant?
Right. I'm thinking, I'm talking about in our code, and I don't have it with me, I should have brought it, but you might know what I'm talking about.
Is it in the water neutrality section of the municipal code, or is it under another section?
I think it's under another section, but we don't have to spend time on it now.
I believe the other section references the water efficiency requirements for all new fixtures under the California Building Code.
Okay, well, if, I remember it differently, but I need to find it. I don't want to spend any more time now, but it is kind of confusing to me. I'll try to find one.
We will ensure the project meets the water neutrality requirements as a part of the building permit analysis.
Do I hear a motion to approve, what was it, 4.2?
I'll move approval with condition number 34 amended as I've proposed.
Second. Second? Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Next item is public hearings. 5.1 is a request for a permit to operate a real estate office, Coldwell Banker, brokers of the Valley, CBBOV, out of the available tenant space located at 1200 Main Street and in the Central Business District.
Chair Kistner, as I represent the property owner, I'm going to need to recuse myself at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair Kistner.
Sorry, Lily.
The project before you is an application to operate a Coldwell Banker real estate office. Specifically, the applicant is requesting a use permit to relocate the Coldwell Banker offices from an existing location at 1289 Main Street to a new location at 1200 Main Street in the Central Business District. Typically, real estate offices are permitted use in this district, but because the use has frontage on Main Street, it triggers a use permit. The real estate office will operate during normal business hours from 8:30 to 5:30 Monday through Friday, with one full-time staff member on site. About four other employees may occasionally work on site, but for the most part, they would work remotely. As detailed in the staff report and draft resolution, parking is sufficient. There are four spaces provided for this particular tenant space. With 2.5, I guess, three spaces would be required under the parking impact district. The project is consistent with the zoning code and general plan requirements. Because the project is a relocation of an established real estate office to a nearby tenant space, and which would be suitable for the proposed location, kind of at the outskirts of the Central Business District, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to approve the project. And that's all I have. The applicant is here to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions, staff?
I do have a couple, if you would, Chair. I'm looking at the parking impact overlay district zoning code. It asks for a different kind of calculation for parking if there's a change in category of uses. So what's the current category of uses for the space?
Right now, or, I don't know if it's vacant right now, but the previous uses were the St. Helena Hospital call center and the St. Helena Star offices at the rear, which, you know, generally is offices.
So it's still offices. So it's offices to offices, so this piece of code doesn't apply, correct?
Yeah. I mean, based on staff's review, it didn't trigger any new parking requirement.
Okay. Actually, it would have been less if you did the calculation. Okay.
Did you have more?
No questions, but I do have some concerns.
Okay, I have a question. It wasn't clear to me whether they are going to be moving into the 3,000 of the square feet or the 6,000 of the square feet.
Yeah, so I believe that the entire building space is 6,000 square feet, and this tenant space is 3,000.
Okay, so I thought, wow, they should have eight parking places.
Yeah, the entire building has eight dedicated spaces.
Okay, so they have four.
Yeah.
And there are seven offices.
Office partitions.
And, yeah, okay. And a prediction of four people in the offices at a time.
Well, my understanding is that there is one full-time person that will be on-site during regular business offices, and then there's, like, four employees who typically work remotely, but then would come to the office for client meetings or for staff meetings, just kind of more on an occasional basis.
And then the other question was, is there going to be an increase in employees with this move?
Not that was communicated to us by the applicant.
Thank you.
Applicant would like to speak, please?
Good evening, Chairperson Kistner, and members of the Planning Commission and the city staff. Lily, thank you very much for putting this report together for us and for the city to help to deliver this tonight. My name is Jeff Beany. I live at 930 North Crane Avenue. I am an employee, or an agent at Coldwell Banker. I've been with them for 10 years, and we have been in St. Helena for over 20 years. This is a locally owned and operated business. It's been in the valley for over 40 years, and we've been looking for a long-term, economically viable and sustainable place that we could have our office and stay here in town. Many of the agents that work in our office work remotely. They're in and out a lot. Real estate agents generally don't come in and sit in an office for eight hours. They come in for an hour, grab some stuff, go meet somebody, show some property, drive around, things like that. So at any given time, there are about three or four people in the office, and they kind of flow. There's an ebb and flow to that. Occasionally, you might see five. A lot of times, you might see none. But by and large, the parking that we have here is roughly the same that we have at our current site. And I would just like to let you know that when we looked around town, we looked for spaces that we thought were appropriate for our use. When we saw the St. Helena Hospital offices moving out, and we see, and we saw the mothballed space behind that used to be part of the St. Helena Star, we thought, office, 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 great. So we looked at the space, we considered how it might lay out for us. So you've seen the layout of how we take some of the existing offices and keep those, and we add a couple more. We have some conference space there as well. And at the end of the day, we have decided that through all the other spaces in town, this one best serves our needs and allows us to best serve the community. The people that are here tonight that are part of our company are members of our community. They raise kids here, they coach sports here, they're on school boards, they're on city committees, they're a fabric of our community. And we come to you tonight and say, "Let us continue our 20-year success here in town. Let us move into a space that's been an office and continue to be an office and continue to help St. Helena move forward." We looked at options to stay where we're at. That was not an option. We couldn't get a lease past one year. You can't successfully plan and operate a business with a one-year lease at a time. Very unpredictable. This gives us a long-term solution to continue to be here as part of the community for a very long time. We appreciate your support, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I don't have any questions yet, but I want to apologize for not answering your email, but I couldn't make my email work today, so I apologize for not getting back to you.
I got a letter C. It just said C. Grace K. So I thought, oh, well, I'll see you tonight.
Anyway, I think it was all the stuff that Aaron sent me yesterday. I could not answer your email, so I apologize for that.
That's okay, no problem. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Yeah. And this is sort of a point of discussion rather than about this immediate move that you have, but, and this is a public hearing, it seems useful to bring up. The question is, your existing space, they're now looking to convert it, or you used up the initial term, and now it's going to be a year-to-year lease. Would that be true of anyone moving into that space? Because this is the reason for asking a question. It's not about this, it's just about sort of a general observation about the St. Helena Main Street downtown situation, is that there's a lot of concern from the good citizens of this lovely town that there are empty storefronts, and some of the feedback has been that, well, the rents are so high, only a luxury good or other things can afford that, and also that perhaps landlords are attaching terms that may not be commercially reasonable to particular spaces. It doesn't strike me that it's commercially reasonable to only have a year lease or a year-to-year lease. Any thoughts or opinions on that?
You'd have to talk to the landlord about her direction on that. We've suggested ways to enhance that and modify that term and make it longer. We've been there for 20 years, so we'd like to continue to stay there. But we found that our best solution is moving to a different site. To speak to St. Helena itself, I think that there have been a number of influences that have impacted downtown St. Helena. One of the major ones is the advent of Amazon. In the last 24 to 36 months, the entire shape of retail as we know it here as consumers in this country, not just here in St. Helena, has changed. Many people who want to buy a necklace, or a coat, or a pair of shoes, or a box of diapers, or whatever it might be, Amazon Prime puts it on your doorstep the next day. You're not going to walk downtown and buy things. I think there are fewer retailers that are looking to open. I don't think St. Helena's done a particularly good job of marketing itself as part of the fabric of this entire Napa Valley, where you have some other people that might engage some of the other things that, like tourism, that comes here. Over 3 million people a year come here. And other towns like Yountville and Calistoga and downtown Napa put hundreds of millions of dollars into their infrastructure to welcome that. They seem to be thriving a little bit more than we are. We have made some progress, but I think overall downtown St. Helena has a great opportunity to grow. But I think that what we see there moving forward in the future will be a little bit more selective than maybe what it was 10 years ago, simply because fewer people are shopping the way they used to.
Thanks.
One question, if you would, Jeff. How many parking spaces do you have at your current location?
So there, if you go along the back alleyway, there are eight. And those eight spaces are not dedicated just to us. They would be for us and the jewelry store and the former Foot Candy space. So almost about, almost exactly the same amount of space, about 6,000 square feet for those eight spaces. And in this scenario, we have the same scenario, except that here, four would be dedicated for us.
Thank you.
Bobby? All right, I don't have any questions either.
Thank you.
I have some comments, but I don't have any questions yet.
I need to...
I will, hold on just a second.
I need to make a disclosure first. I did receive a call from Donna Hines, and we talked about other things, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Oh, I should disclose, I talked to Tom Dixon about this space.
All right, I'd like to open public comment. Is there any public comment?
Good evening, Chairperson and Commissioners. My name is Ward Smith. I live at 1624 Muller Drive in Napa, and I'm the manager of the Coldwell Banker office here in St. Helena. And having that intimate knowledge of the business, I thought maybe I could be helpful in addressing any questions you have. Excuse me. We very much like our office. As Jeff says, we've been there for 20 years, and we would very much like to stay there. But we also have to have an economically sustainable business plan. And unfortunately, our rent has increased rather dramatically in the very recent history, and at the same time, the term that we are allowed to stay there has shortened. We have tried to negotiate for a longer term so we can have some predictability in our business and know that we'll be able to survive the changes in the real estate market that are inevitable. We have been unable to do that. The best offer we can get right now is a one-year lease, and our rent was increased literally 35% to get that one-year lease. So at that point, we had to make a decision to move. We consider ourselves citizens of St. Helena. We've been here a long time. As Jeff says, our members, our agents, and our staff live in St. Helena, many of them. We contribute to the committees and the schools and the various activities in the city, and we want to stay here. The only way we can do that is to find another place in the Central Business District, because it is important to us to have a presence in the Central Business District, to let people know that we're there, that we are available. It's just part of our environment in the real estate business. So the space we are leaving, I know one of the concerns is, it's important to have retail space on Main Street, and we all agree with that. I think the space that we're vacating is probably better for retail space than the space we're moving into. We're really moving to the periphery of the Central Business District, vacating a space that's really in the heart of the Central Business District and is potentially sustainable for a retail business because that space actually has two addresses. It's 1289, we always call it 1289, but the rear part of that building, which we also occupy, is 1299B. It could be separated, the front part could be rented to a retail business, and probably be sustainable if they only had to take that much square footage. We unfortunately need more square footage than that, so we rent the rear as well. So I think that our vacation of that space does not, is not likely to hurt the retail users of Main Street, Central Business District. In fact, it's probably going to help them to give that opportunity to go in that space. I don't think I have anything further, actually. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions to the applicant? Bobby?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
I'm Carolyn Bell, 790 Childs Avenue in St. Helena, and I've lived here since 2009. I'm also an agent at Coldwell Banker, and I just wanted to say that I support what has been previously said by our representatives.
Thank you.
Hi, Donna Hines, Magnolia Avenue, and I'm also an agent with Coldwell Banker, and I support this move. And just want to reiterate, you know, that our agents here are really involved in the community. We're local-serving. As you've heard, we're on committees, we're involved with the school, and just, you know, doing great things for the community, and I hope you support this request. Thank you.
Any further public comment?
Hi, my name is Robin Rose, and I live in Napa, but as the general manager of Coldwell Banker, brokers of the valley, I was before this committee 20 years ago making the same request. When we first came to St. Helena, the first couple of months I was the manager, we were informed that our space had to be earthquake retrofitted within three months of when I took the job. So I had to come before the Planning Commission and request a use permit for our current location where we are. We were new to the community, we had very little market share, we hadn't been here long. You rolled the dice with us. And since that time, we've been here 20 years. We've probably represented, I would say a good estimate is 4,000 to 5,000 St. Helena residents over the last 20 years. We now have the number-one market share within the community. We are a part of the community, and we really appreciate your support then, and we're asking you to allow us to continue. It's unfortunate that we can't stay where we are, but we just, we can't. And we'd really like the opportunity to continue, so thank you.
Any further public comment? I'll close public comment. Bobby, would you like to start the discussion?
Sure. First of all, I'd like to thank every one of you who wrote these letters, and, I mean, they were really, I mean, they really got to my heart, and, you know, and it is really great that most of you, all of you are from Napa Valley, I think, and many of you are from St. Helena, and that means a lot. And, I was going to say something, I can't remember. Okay, I was, the only thing I heard from the public was a concern about parking, but it seems to me that the use is going to be exactly the same, and there isn't any change. And frankly, I think that the building you're going into is a way cooler building. It's got stone on it, and it's nearer, closer to the place to get coffee and whatever. I think it, I think, I hope you get, if you move, I hope you get used to it and love it as much. And it's, maybe it's more space, I'm not sure, I don't know what the square footage is. But I don't have any, any problem with the move at all, except for one thing, and that is that the... is that the space that you're leaving is going to be, have a conditional permit for another real estate office. And I was speaking with Planning Director House today about that. And I, apparently, due to a lawsuit, after six months, if the owner does not rent this to another real estate business...
That's true.
The city can change it to a different kind of zoning. And so I would, I would totally approve this project, but I would want that as to be part of it, that there would be, it would be very clear, and I don't know how, what word to use for it, but that the city would red-flag it so that you would track it, so in six months you'd know. And then I was told it's not an onerous process, and in six months you would change it from the conditional use of the real estate office to something else. And I had one question. Does that, can they, could they rent it to some other kind of business in the, within that six months if the owner wanted to?
So there's, there's two issues there. One is a continuing use doctrine, it's fairly well-known in land use, and the other is a new use. So if Caldwell Banker were to leave this site, our current zoning code, I was just reviewing this now, it seems to direct that if there is a use in that location that does not have an existing use permit, they are not able to move forward as a continuing use without coming back to the commission with a use permit. Staff in reviewing the records for this project did not find a use permit on the current site for the current Caldwell Banker location. I'm checking with staff.
None.
There was no, there was no use permit.
No use permit, gone.
So the, the current code would require a use permit for a new real estate office. However, there are changes, there are case law that affects that determination that I have not had the discussion with the city attorney about to see if our current code is in compliance with that case law. So there is a question that if someone applied for a business license tomorrow at this location for a real estate office, they could likely continue, but I can't confirm that yet because I need to discuss it, it seems.
What if they apply, once somebody wanted to apply for another kind of business?
So if a different use goes in that office, any continuing use element is taken off the table, and that new use becomes the baseline for all future review.
So that could happen?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay. So I would like, I would like that requirement, or what a caveat, whatever you want to call it, put into the approval so that the city would, if, if it's necessary, if we have to wait six months to do that, unless another business comes in there and changes it back to another use before the six months is up, just so we don't have a conditional, you know, we don't, you know what I'm saying.
I understand what you're saying, and we'll see what the other commissioners have to add to that.
Yeah, so, because I don't think we need to have that, another real estate business in that, in that site. That's my main concern.
David?
Hi. I don't think we can do that, because it's, that's, I mean, they're asking for a permit for the, this new office space that should be tied...
No, it has nothing to do with the new project. I'm totally in favor of their new project. I'm just concerned about what's being left behind.
But I don't think there's anything we can do about that. There's an administrative process already that, unless I'm wrong...
Well, I spoke with...
Director House.
So you are correct. So typically, when a, an existing use leaves a business site, staff does not move forward with that administrative process to immediately look to end that conforming use or continuing use status. However, at the direction of the commission, staff could look to move forward to that to preclude a future real estate office from moving into the current location with the goal, I'm imagining, of getting a more retailer activity generating use in that location.
That's what I'm, that's what I mean.
But that is a separate resolution.
Completely separate process.
Right. Great.
Oh, but so we wouldn't do it tonight? We would, how could we, that has nothing to do with this?
It's not going to be in any decision on this site. However, if the commission, as a part of this deliberation, directs staff to look at the current location of Caldwell Banker in this situation, we will.
Okay, well, I would like to direct staff to do that, I'm not sure if...
And Senior Planner Heacock just reminded me that on the 20th of this month, we will be bringing a downtown use discussion before the commission, and that is a perfect opportunity to have that conversation.
Okay, so it sounds like you would rather wait until then, before anything else?
For Brown Act and other requirements, we need to have a full discussion on that...
All right.
...after we notice it.
Okay, that's fine.
I have no other comments, I, you know, seems perfect.
My only concern about this proposed change is parking. I realize this in the parking overlay district. I realize it meets the existing standards that are set forth in the zoning code. However, your current space does have more parking. I've heard some counts of 11. I know you said eight, but I heard some counts of 11.
So I've heard.
And the parking you'll be switching to is not easily accessible. It's down a long, narrow, degraded alleyway, right next to the railroad. Those spaces are difficult to maneuver into, difficult to maneuver out of. So parking is my concern. I don't want to put any extra weight on this project. I agree, you're moving out of what is a more centralized area that could be used for retail space that would generate the city some sales tax income. And so I'm generally in favor of this. Parking is just such a big concern in the downtown area. It's, it's my number-one concern. And I would like to hear assurances that A, you won't be parking in the Sunshine Parking Lot across the street; B, you will indeed use those spaces in the back, even though they're hard to get to and hard to get out of; and that C, you will at least lend a verbal support to getting us some additional parking downtown. That's my concern is parking. Otherwise, I would vote for this in a New York second.
I have two concerns. Number one is, I have the same numbers, I think, that John has. You're saying that there will only be four to five onsite staff members at any one time? And I certainly could go along with this if you'd like to put that in, into the...
It's already in.
...resolution, that there will be no more than five or four or five people in the office at the same time. Beside your own parking, you'll also be taking up parking places for your, for your clients. And I think we've just had another debacle with the less arc of us, and I don't really think we want to get into more parking problems. And so if you would like to do this, and if you'd like to put that into the resolution that you will have no more than so many onsite at one time, then I have no problem with it. I think it's a good project. I do have another problem, is that our general plan of 2040 indicates that the real estate offices should be either on the periphery of the city or on the second floor, and therefore I would like to, and I don't know if this is legal, and I think the planning directors are going to have to determine this, is that I believe that if you, if you would agree that the, this doesn't run with the land, then I, I can support this project. I would like that, that in the resolutions if we do that.
I want to just say something. I don't think we are in a position to tell people how to run their business, and I don't think we can require that someone...
I'm not telling them how to run their business.
I don't think we require that there are only so many people, so many agents in the office at any one time. I mean, if there need to be more...
The applicant said that in his application, Bobby.
I understand it, but I don't think there's any way to monitor it. And, and my, and the other thing is, they already are operating exactly the way they're going to be operating in their new place, and the parking is whatever it is. And it's not going to be increased, or aren't going to be, they didn't hire new people.
Well, that's your opinion.
And nothing else is going to change. Well, I was just, yeah, I was just...
Your opinion.
Okay, but I just want to put that out there. I don't see that there's any additional...
I would say the parking is going to change, Bobby. It's harder to reach, it's harder to get out of...
Not because of this change.
It, it did change. It is a significant change. I mean, if you've ever driven down to the end of that alley, and that's the last place you can park down that alley, that's full of potholes and is right next to the railroad track, it's not easy to get to. So, yeah, there is a change.
Is, is that our alley? Do we, does the city maintain that alley?
It's a privately owned alley between all those property owners along that side and in the wine tree.
You think the alley's bad, the parking places in the back are even worse.
So I've spent a lot of time in that alley.
Uh-oh.
Yes, that's right.
Say more.
It's a, it's a back...
I know where he hangs out.
It's, you know, I ride my bike around town, and that is a easy way to get from railroad down to Pope, and then cross it to get to Sunshine. And it's full of, full of debris and glass and, you know, and sometimes I park behind Brown, the Brown Auto Parts, just to get there. You know, I think we've got to be encouraging of uses in this town, and these guys, they're long-term guys, and...
They're good guys.
Yeah, and, and the hosp, it strikes me that the hospital, I'm not sure quite what they were trying to do with that space, but that was sort of a potentially heavier use than this space. Yeah, well, there wasn't, but the plan was higher use than that. It strikes me that, let's not attach any conditions to this. I, I'm concerned about downtown, I, I'm concerned about parking, I'm concerned about access, I'm concerned about Amazon, maybe. You know, I want, I want our downtown to be vibrant, I don't think we need to be Yountville, I, I want us to be St. Helena, but, I don't know, these, this is the kind of long-term business that we should just be supportive of them, I, in my mind, in thinking through this more completely.
I agree.
The parking, it's a challenge, it's a challenge everywhere, so...
Yeah, I agree, and I also wanted to ask, is this a public safety issue? The glass on the road, I mean, does the city have any jurisdiction over, over private property that is...
It's a private easement.
I mean, it's an, it's an attractive nuisance, if, if nothing else? And the property owners should be taking care of that.
There are nuisance provisions in the current code, it's not any element of this discussion.
Okay, but that is a possibility, a possible solution.
It, it's a private easement, and it's over an odd set of properties. The, the building that we're concerned with is extremely old, but the railroad is perhaps a bit older. So that's actually partially on railroad property, partially on property owned by the building in question. So it's, it's an, it's an odd easement, it's an old easement. I don't even know if the records are complete, given the age of what we're talking about. So I don't think you can hang this on anybody in particular. Like, and like I said, I'm, I applaud the move, it's from the downtown core to the edge of it, which improves the situation as far as retail goes. Bueno. It's just that parking is so nasty downtown, and so barely adequate where you're moving to, that, that I want to register concerns about it. And, you know, if, if there was some way to say that, all right, you know, I don't care how many employees you got at the office at one time, but you can only have four vehicles, I would go for it, but there's no way to do that.
But that's apparently more guaranteed spaces than they have now, because the spaces they have access to now are not guaranteed for them, and these are. So in a sense, they have more parking now than...
Oh, I don't believe that.
You don't believe that? Well, that's what I heard. So I don't know why you don't believe what was said. I don't know if...
Chairperson Kissner, I'm more, I'm curious to tease out your concerns a little bit further. I mean, one of the concern is, is the concern about the number of folks that are in the office? Is that the, a parking concern, or is that another?
That's a parking concern, yes.
It's a parking concern.
That's a parking concern, yes.
Okay, and...
And my other concern is, is...
Use the microphone.
My other concern is that the new general plan that hopefully will be done sometime in August or September does not allow real estate offices...
Yeah.
...other than on the periphery or the second floor on Main Street.
Yeah.
And so all I'm asking for that is that, is that if we, if we legally can do it, I would like to have it so that it, the lease wouldn't run with the land.
Okay, okay, great.
So is that what we can do with this, or do we have to wait for...
So that is my, that is my concern because of the new general plan, and, and I would hate to have them move out and then have to put another real estate office in there. That's, that's my concern with that. And I just read the general plan again, so I know it's there.
I totally agree with that.
I believe the planning director will verify that.
Director House, is that, is that a second rider, so to speak? Is that something that we could do reasonably?
So I've been trying to, I was just made aware of this issue tonight, and so I've been trying to get some information from the city attorney, and we are having an exchange. He wanted some more time to do the research. Staff is happy to have the commission condition that, and I have some draft language here, should the commission feel that that's appropriate. And then, obviously, we would have to work with the city attorney to formalize the language and discuss the legality. I will say, non-conforming use status, continuing use status has been a significant issue in a number of court cases, and so there's a lot of case law that affects that. And that combined with our somewhat antiquated zoning code, I'm not comfortable giving a definitive answer tonight. However, obviously, the commission can direct staff to put conditional language in the use permit, should that be the direction, subject to legal review.
And I, I also don't think, I think we do have a parking problem, but I don't think that we should, I mean, in general, I don't think this particular project is exacerbating that problem in any way, except for, and it's debated, you know, it's arguable what your concern is.
Bobby, I think you've made that point about four times now, and I think that enough is enough on the parking.
Well, no, I haven't in this sense. I said, I, what I'm saying now is I don't think that we should try to solve the parking problem with this particular case, because this particular...
We need to start solving it someplace.
Okay, so I'd like to make, can I make a stab at a resolution?
You certainly may.
Okay, so my stab would be to conditionally approve this use permit. Is that what we're doing?
Correct.
Conditionally approve this with the caveat, or approve this with the caveat that we would await additional input from the city attorney regarding Chairperson Kissner's concerns about allowing the use to continue after...
They move out.
So I have draft language that I could...
Great.
...write to the commission.
And that's what I'd like to...
Move?
Move.
Second.
That we do.
The language would be adding a condition to preclude continuation of non-conforming status of the current use upon vacation of the tenant space by Caldwell Banker as a tenant.
All right, and I think that we should ask the applicant whether that's acceptable to them?
Good evening, again. First of all, Mr. Pont, absolutely would completely support the application for more parking in this town. I think there's a fund with probably $300,000 or $400,000, and it's sitting there earmarked for just such an idea. The PGE Parking Lot, hopefully the city can reach some resolution with them to add more parking there. And in terms of our parking, as good stewards of the building, we will use the four spaces that are, that are allocated to us to use, which is different than the arrangement we have now, which is anywhere from zero to eight. There are 11 spaces behind the building. Three spaces, however, are dedicated to the Christopher Hill Gallery in the rear annex, which belonged to Foot Candy. So the eight spaces in back indeed apply to the main part of the building. So that's the discrepancy on the two numbers. I would also say that even though the parking lot is difficult to get into, people will be using those. And Commissioner Kissner, as far as putting a cap on the people that are there, it's an ebb and a flow, so I don't know who's coming and who's going, or how that checkout might work. But if you stop by our office tomorrow at 2:00 or 10:00 or 5:00, whatever, I think you'll find that on any given day at any given time, it'll be Valerie up front with one or two agents in there. Sometime a couple more come in. So it is difficult to monitor that, and we, we do our best to be out in the field making deals happen and come back and have meetings. And I would just like to say that we will, we'll honor the, the parking arrangement that we have, and let you know that we're not going to do anything that is unneighborly toward anybody. And if there's glass out behind our space, we'll, we'll clean it up, so.
Good luck.
Thanks.
So, so you don't, so you don't mind if, if your conditional use permit ends if you leave the space?
What I want to say to that, thank you, is that the conditional use permit that we put before you tonight is for us to use the space. That's all we're asking. If the city wants to put in language into their general plan or their, their law policies that say that after somebody leaves, it's gone, that wouldn't affect us, we would be gone. So we don't want to be hung up by something that may happen 20 years from now for the urgency with which we need to have something looked at tonight and, and have a yes or a no. And I, I don't think it's... And I, I don't think it's, uh, it's up to us to say yes to that. I think that's case law in California or somebody else, and I don't think that by us saying we would want that, I mean, it wouldn't affect us, right? Okay, yeah, we're gone. Do whatever you want. I mean, that's, I don't think that's, that's the intention. I think the intention is you guys need to decide with the city on what's the appropriate measure there, but please don't condition our project based on something that may or may not happen in the future. Thank you.
I think my move, it stands. It's, the, the, the motion that I made, thank you.
What do you say?
My motion is stands.
Okay, I'll second it. That stands.
Your call, please.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet? Yes. Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Chair Kissner?
Yes.
Can I just ask one question? Does that, does that mean we have a conditional use permit or do we have to wait until?
Your use permit's approved and we'll finalize the language with the city attorney.
Thank you very much.
Well, I, I just think that we've got a new general plan coming and, and we really have to kind of abide by that as much as possible, and, and that's what it's going to call for. And, and I don't want them moving out in six months or a year and then having another real estate office going. I think that's a great space for commercial.
Even though that's the mortuary. Even though that's the mortuary side.
You got it, John. You guys want a break? We're going to let you back, Lester. Yeah, we're going to take a 10-minute break here.
We've tried to solve some issues by making a particular application.
Is there a sure, assurance? Yes, they are. They're hard to get to and they're messy, right? They're hard to get off and they're messy. Because we can't, we can't afford, we can't afford for those people to decide they're going to park in a somewhere.
As long as they, as long as.
The next item tonight is 5.2. It's requested by Alexander Heil on behalf of the St. Helena Montessori School for adoption of a resolution approving design review in order to accommodate building design and floor plan changes to several previously approved school buildings and the construction of a new toddler building located on a Montessori school campus at 880 Pope Street. Or College, what is it? It's not on here.
Actually, I've been advised. I work with Matthew Heil, who's one of the applicants, and so I will be recusing myself for the discussion.
Before we go, I need to disclose that I received a call from Matt, and we didn't discuss anything, but then I called him back and asked him a question about the art center.
I met with the applicant at the site.
Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair Kistner. I'd just like to make note that the Planning Commission requested and has been provided with supplemental information. All that information has been uploaded to the city's website and is available for anyone to look at at any time. As summarized in the staff report, in order to establish and ultimately construct a school on the project site, the St. Helena Montessori School has obtained numerous approvals in recent years, including a general plan amendment, rezone, use permit, design review, and more. Due to the long project history, numerous entitlements involved, and corresponding volume of potential attachments, staff chose to summarize past project history that approved school use in school buildings is what is proposed now, or minor changes in design and layout of those approved school buildings. No changes in use are proposed, and the proposed changes to the buildings add a relatively small amount of new square footage. Essentially, the applicant is proposing to redesign previously approved Buildings E and F and construct a new toddler building immediately adjacent to those buildings on the 20.66 acre school property. While the footprint of Building E would remain largely the same, the footprint of Building F would be reduced and move closer to Building E so that the buildings could be situated under one roof. A new toddler building is now proposed near where the previously approved Building F was to be located. These changes result in approximately 492 square feet more floor area than was originally approved, which is about 2% of the overall square footage. As described in previous approvals, the buildings remain single-story in use, except that the adolescent building has a 250-square-foot mechanical room upstairs from the first-story school space, so it could be argued that it is two stories in height. The roof height of this building, however, has been lowered from a maximum height of 36 feet as previously proved to a height of 24 feet 1 inch now. The proposed toddler building is also single-story with a height of 20 feet 9 inches to its highest point. Again, no change or expansion of use is being proposed with this project. Project site is located in the public quasi-public district where there are no set development standards. It is up to the Planning Commission to determine whether or not the proposed structures are appropriate for the site. As far as parking is concerned, the school requires 78 onsite parking spaces and currently provides 85 onsite spaces, and there is room to accommodate more in the future if needed. The school has an adopted and recorded water service agreement with the city that provides the school with up to 1,560,000 gallons of water per year. The provided water demand analysis states that the school uses approximately 1,254,000 gallons per year when construction is complete. As detailed in the staff report, a mitigated negative declaration was adopted for the project on May 12, 2009. An addendum to this document was prepared in order to address changes to the project since its previous adoption. These changes include an updated noise analysis to reflect actual conditions on-site, and, as mentioned, the addition of 492 square feet of building floor area. Based upon information provided in the revised noise, uh, excuse me, revised noise analysis and M&amp;D addendum, the changes to the previously approved project will not result in any new significant impacts or substantially increase the severity of impacts previously identified in the adopted M&amp;D. The provided addendum is only intended to provide supplemental information and clarifying information per SEQA. These changes are purely informational, and the prior M&amp;D is adequate to analyze the potential impacts of the proposed project. Staff believes that the proposed project is consistent with the required design review criteria, and that the proposed changes to the previously approved school buildings are minor in nature and do not affect the compatibility of the buildings to the site and its surroundings. Additionally, the new toddler building has been designed to suit the site and match the aesthetic of the existing buildings on the school property, and again, no changes or expansion in use is proposed. For these reasons, staff finds that the required findings can be made in support of approving the project, and recommends that the Planning Commission determine that the prior mitigated negative declaration adopted for the project is adequate pursuant to Section 15162 of the SEQA guidelines, and accept the required findings and approve a resolution granting design review approval for the project design and site modifications to include, including a new toddler building to the St. Helena Montessori School located 880 College Avenue. At this time, the applicant does have a presentation they would like to share with the commission.
Chair and Commissioners, thank you very much. My name's Alexander Heil. I am the Director of the Adolescent Program, the program that hopefully will be occupying one of these buildings. I'll be available for a comment, but 10 years ago, when we initially submitted to the city for construction of these drawings, or buildings, we had never operated an adolescent program, so that's why we're coming back with these modifications. My brother Matthew has prepared a slideshow that can illustrate the highlights of the project, and then we'll both be available for questions.
Thank you, Alex. Chair Kistner and members of the Planning Commission, it's great to be here this evening to share with you our plans. Just as, by way of introduction, I just wanted to give kind of a very high-level, you know, kind of read-through. First, we'd like to compliment staff for their very thorough, you know, staff report, and frankly, going through folders and binders and all sorts of things over the last 10 years with the staff turnover at City Hall and such, we were really able to get kind of a comprehensive view of the school's entitlements for both the Planning Commission and for the community and for ourselves, so that there was a nice, clean record. In summary, with this project on the next slide, oh, does this work if I press it? Perfect. Just real quick, you know, excuse, sorry, by way of introduction, that's the first page. The school was founded in 1981 by my mother, Elena Heil, our head of school, who's here this evening, and my aunt, Olga McGadham. Operated out of rented facilities in town on Spring Street. In 2009, we were approved to move the school to 880 College Avenue in six permanent classroom buildings and a barn. Due to the recession and the fallout from the Great Recession, we were forced to phase fundraising and construction of these six buildings and the barn over a number of years. We are excited to finally complete the original master plan and build the last two buildings, but of course, as my brother explained, we're back here for some minor redesign work that we did to those two buildings. So, in summary, there's, you know, as staff said, there's no change or expansion of use. The toddler program and the adolescent program were approved in 2009 and were subsequently launched. They've been operating out of temporary facilities on the campus. The buildings have been reconfigured with the knowledge of our close to 10 years of experience operating these programs. When we originally designed them, we hadn't operated a toddler or an adolescent program to that point. We're moving those same students, adolescent and toddler students, from those temporary classrooms on campus into permanent classrooms in these two buildings. The next slide is just the site plan. This was all in the packet, so it's not any new information. That shows the old Building E and the old Building F there in orange, called out. As staff said, the, you know, previously approved buildings were situated a little further apart, and we'll show you what we decided to do with the revision in order to have more continuity between the two buildings. We've located, it looks from this angle almost like three separate buildings, but it's really all attached by the overhead walkways that connect the three structures, if you will, into one structure with one roof over them all. And then at the bottom of the page there is the smaller toddler building that will house the toddler students. And it's separate from the middle school students. We decided to separate those two and locate the toddler building with its own access from the parking lot, so that when parents drop off, they can park safely on that side of the sidewalk and walk their children straight into the toddler building without having to go through the campus. This slide shows it a little bit better. If you see at the bottom row of parking, at the very bottom, that would be where our toddler parking would be, because of course, the parents have to walk those children in, and that's the safest way for them to get to that building. This next piece is really about what we're here tonight for, which is design review, is the design. I think it's probably pretty rare that, you know, the Planning Commission sees a mock-up quite like this of what we're proposing to build. This is the exact same design as we're planning for the other two buildings. It's a board and batten siding with a comp shingle roofing. The buildings are designed to lead gold standards. If you notice, the overhangs and walkways, the buildings are aligned to the points of the compass, and our heating and cooling bill is de minimis. It was actually much, much cheaper than the rented trailers that we had with the HVACs that go and go and go, because so little sun gets in through the south, especially that hot afternoon sun doesn't penetrate into the buildings, because we have those overhangs. And they serve as a shaded walkway for the children, so they can get from building to building, classroom to classroom during the rainy season as well. This is the proposed new building. As you can see, again, connected with the covered walkways. This is the angle looking at it, almost from the north, back towards the building. And this is a kind of a truer representation of what it would look like with the same white board and batten windows and the comp shingle roofing and the overhangs. In conclusion, again, no change or expansion of the use is being proposed. It's just design review for these two buildings. The less than 2% change in a total approved square footage was for a, you know, music storage area, some additional storage for musical instruments, and also for a restroom that could be, that could serve adults only, as opposed to, you know, restrooms that are in the buildings that some of the children use. You know, we have these, will be basically like a visitor restroom. So that was, you know, something that we hadn't envisioned needing, but we've found in operating the facilities, it's best, it would be great to have a visitor restroom, or for parents that are dropping off, so they don't go into the classroom buildings. The design remains the same, except for a reduction in mass and the height of the buildings. I think this is an important point for us. The biggest objection to our entire plan last time around was by our neighbor immediately to the south, Peter McGowan and his wife, Deborah. There was a big cupola at about 35 feet. It was beautiful, but it was, you know, pretty tall, and it was approved, but after the fact, Peter said, "I really wish you guys wouldn't build that cupola." So, we took the cupola off, reconfigured the entire building, so that it comes down almost 11 feet from the original approvals. So, and then, in addition to that, the massing goes way down, too. The water use is within the limitations of the existing use permit. I'll just draw your attention to the number that is 1.56 million. The actuarial table that was used in 2009 was 40 gallons per student per day, which we thought was somewhat absurd, to be honest. Our children probably maybe on average use a liter, or two liters, or maybe two gallons per day, but we had to base our water consumption based on those theoreticals. Now that we've been operating on the campus, I'm pleased to say we're in the 300,000 to 400,000 gallon range, so much, much, much lower. But however, again, the city has adopted a water consumption of 20, for a school use, 20 gallons per student per day, and that's what is proposed, and that's what's in the staff report. So therefore, the number that's in your staff report is the 1.2, 1.246, I think it is, or 64 million gallons. And that is consistent with our, you know, with the current, you know, I mean, it's way above, but that's the current theoretical demand. And then lastly, the modifications are consistent with the city's design review criteria. I mean, this was very important to us to stick with what has already been approved and with what would be approvable, you could make the required findings for. At this point, we'll take any questions. I will note, we didn't put up the site plan and walk you through every room. If you feel that's necessary, we'd be happy, my brother, who's the lead on the design for the building, would be happy to walk you through the different spaces, so you can understand the floor plan. From the original approval, the floor pans have a few, you know, rooms that shifted, but in general, it's the same. So that's it. Are there any questions, the applicant? I guess that's not my line. Sorry.
I have a question of the Planning Commission. I've had several calls today because of the volumes of things that Mr. Heacock put on the internet yesterday. I've had many people ask if we could continue this for two weeks, and I'm not going to make that decision myself. I think that that's up to the Planning Commission, so I would like to hear what you all have to say.
I don't, I, this is, all of this stuff has already been approved, and I think people were wanting to see things, but I personally feel perfectly comfortable voting for it tonight. I don't need, I don't think we need to continue it, because it's a minor design review, and it's already all been approved. So, that's what I'm thinking.
Well, I initiated the request for documents for two reasons. One, since, although it seemed to me the water agreement here was not relevant to our decision tonight, water agreements more generally have been a subject of some controversy, and I thought it would be informative for me to see what this water agreement says. And I'm more convinced now than before. It's not a subject of any concern and not relevant, you know, other than the fact that it sets a limit, and, you know, we've already seen the staff report that the project is well within that limit. I also requested documents related to those items in the project approval history, where the staff report noted, it appears that the Planning Commission approved something, or it appears that the City Council approved something. And the wording suggested to me that staff was not entirely certain what had happened, and I thought it would be good to, for me, again, to understand what the record looked like. There are a lot of documents that were transmitted, but at the end of the day, they have, for me, simply demonstrated that what he said appeared to have happened did in fact happen. I think perhaps the tentative way in which those items were described in the staff report was more tentative than really called for. And those particular items, again, are peripheral at best to the design review that's in front of us. So I see no good purpose to a continuance, although I understand that there's always interest by some members of the public in having the time to review what is distributed.
John?
I'd either like to thank Lester for asking for the extra documents, or beat him soundly about the shoulders for asking for the extra documents. I'm not sure which way I'm going to go. I did spend several hours going through them. It did give me a complete picture. You know, being a resident while this went, you know, all this has been going on, I had some familiarity with it. This is, all that extra information did help. So I, I feel that we have enough to move on, and like you said, most of that was peripheral to this decision tonight. I would like to point out that this is a little bit more than design review. There's a few items that are beyond it. In fact, the resolution says approves the design review permit and authorizes the modifications contained in said plans. So I will remind everybody, this is not simply design review, and there are items here that we need to discuss beyond the design. Given that, I'm ready, I think, after I hear from everybody, to vote on it, in part because I did have the extra documentation, and I think it did come out enough time that if you were interested, you could plow through it.
Well, Lester wasn't the only one asked for all this stuff, so I've gone through all of it also. So, poor Aaron got it from both sides, I think. I've kind of followed this project from the very beginning. I like, I like the school over there. I think one of the things we have to consider in the future, however, is the effect on the city that some of these schools, if we're going to keep building private schools, have. I think that, I think right now, some of the schools are hurting for money, and I think because they're losing students, and I, so I would think that when we start doing a project, we need to assess what the end result could be on some of the other city. That will not stop me from voting for this, but I do think that that's something we really need to look at. Not just for a school, but for anything that we're doing in town. I think we need to assess what's going to happen in the future. All right? So do I hear a motion?
Oh, I...
Or did you want to talk some more, John?
Public hearing.
I did have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
I have a couple of things I want to...
My first one would be concerning the number of students. It seems to total up to 177. That number will not change, right?
Yes, so the initial documents that were prepared, it wasn't that there was a cap established, it's that there were, you know, document, there were impacts that were calculated based on trips and that sort of a thing.
Right.
What has actually wound up happening is there's been a lot, you know, we are slightly above 177, because that wasn't, you know, interpreted to us to be a cap. The Nimbus Arts component to this project, traffic, has been greatly diminished from the original approvals, because Nimbus uses the property as a satellite campus. They found that locating their main building in town was more, they were more able to serve the whole community. And so we have an MOU with Nimbus that's on file, it's on file with the city, it's been, you know, negotiated with Nimbus, it's, you know, long-term agreement, MOU, and they'll be continuing to use the campus as a satellite. So in terms of the net impacts, you know, I think that we're below what was originally anticipated, but again, there wasn't a firm cap. There's no additional enrollment envisioned with these two buildings. We already have the kids on campus, but I'd be lying if I told you we were at 177 today. We're slightly above that.
The write-up in the original document says Nimbus is 35 students, but it wasn't clear in that document, or it was 35 of your students, or 35 additional students? So I suppose I...
That's a great catch.
That gives you some flex.
Yeah, and I think, I think the original thought process was actually that a number of our, you know, by co-locating, if you will, the art center on the property, it would generate fewer trips, because students could literally go straight from school to an art class after school, and therefore, they'd get picked up at 4:30 instead of at 3:00, or what have you. Because Nimbus has not launched programs during the school week on campus, those 35 trips are zero.
Okay.
It's only during the summer that there are trips, and that's when our trips are, you know, minimal, de minimis, for the year-round staff.
And I would say, just for my own security, that a number of students is key to the impacts that the project has.
Sure.
So, if you're around 177, well, that's probably fine, but if you're 277, now we're talking something entirely different.
Right.
So, it is key how many students you have, but you're assuring me it's, eh, 177.
Well, I don't want to be cagey about it. Our Director of Admissions is here. I think, I think we're at about 210 right now.
210?
Yeah, so, and that, you know, that is, you know, a result of essentially, you know, success. And I think Commissioner Kistner spoke to this. You know, we've been able to attract and retain, you know, students. We've been in the community since, again, since 1981, and we started with 12 kids.
Okay.
So, you know, actually, I suppose we should go on the record, based on, you know, current happenings in town, that we think that schools, you know, as many different schools is a good thing. Choice is good. You know, parents could choose whichever school they want for their, and we know that not every student would like, or not every parent would like, you know, only to have one choice or two choices in town, so.
So if you're at, if you're at 210 now, you're within two students of the original analysis of 177 plus 35 from Nimbus. So you're, you're right at the edge of what the analysis was done at. I would be interested in having some assurances that the intent wasn't to have 3, 4, 5, 600 students on campus, that there is indeed a cap to what you can accommodate.
Well, my mother might have a heart attack or something. But secondly, we're full, and we have a waiting list, and this is, this is it. I mean, this is capacity.
So you're saying at 210, you're full?
We're full.
Well, does that exceed your use permit count? No.
I'll let staff answer that.
Staff has the use permits here, and as Senior Planner Heacock mentioned, they are, they have been provided to the public and the commission, but there is no cap on the unit, on the number of students identified in the use permit.
I recognize that, but the number of students is what drives the analysis.
The SEQA analysis.
The SEQA analysis, in terms of impacts of the project, water impacts, sewer impacts, you know, the whole nine yards is driven by the number of students. So if their students count is going beyond what the analysis encompasses, I think we have a concern.
We want a new analysis.
It seems to me, Noah, that the first question is really, what is before us tonight? And I do read the staff report, and in particular, the resolution, as John does, in that it indicates we are both doing design review, and we're also asked to approve some modifications to the original approval, at least as to siting of buildings and size. It's not obvious to me at this moment whether this means we're modifying the use permit approval or what, but I think we do need some guidance from staff as to the scope of tonight's actions and what that means for the environmental analysis.
So from staff's perspective, the item before the commission is purely a design review. A 2% change in floor plan is not seen as a, it's seen as substantial conformance with the approved design of the project. What triggered the change was the siting differences and the fact that the two buildings were merged into one. When the applicants contacted staff and said, you know, "What's our process to make these changes?", as they were considering whether to move forward with the existing approval or submit to make the modification, staff looked at it and said, "It's not the minor increase in the square footage that's triggering the need to come before the commission, it's the overall change in the design, this combination of the two buildings, the siting changes, as Commissioner Hardy has identified, that trigger a need for a new design review approval for these, these design changes." From the staff perspective, there is no proposed use change, there is no use change before the commission. And getting to the point about the SEQA review, that is a moment in time. SEQA analysis numbers are not in and of themselves limitations. If there had been a concern at the time the project was approved, that it should have a maximum cap on the number of students, the decision-makers at that time would have taken that analysis and extrapolated into what the cap should be. That obviously wasn't done in this situation. That being said, it is a relevant element of the conversation, but there is no hard number limiting student counts as a part of any of the discretionary approvals for the project.
Well, then, thank you, Noah. As a follow-on question, does this application then fall within the scope of the advice you've received previously from the city attorney regarding the limitation on what we can do in SEQA analysis when there is a design review decision before us?
So Commissioner Hardy is referring to the limitation of the discretion. The commission will remember this from some discussions with the city attorney, that the discretion before the commission is limited to the discretion exercised by the application type. This being designed, theoretically, the conversation of impacts should be limited to discretion of our design elements. of our design elements. However, in this situation, a mitigated negative declaration was done for the entire project. The project's impacts were analyzed under that, and this analysis, or in this decision, will rely on that previous analysis, which was broader than just the discretion exercised under the design review, because it did approve the use, it approved the number of buildings, all of those things. What's before the commission is a design review application that falls within the scope of the previous SEQA analysis.
I'm going to have to confess, I'm not sure that really answered my question. So what I'm trying to understand is what the limits of our SEQA-related action are tonight.
Focused purely on design, because that's the discretionary entitlement before the commission.
Thank you.
I think that's something we ought to put on a future agenda, Lester, and get a full discussion on that. I have an open public comment yet, Bobby.
Okay. Then, if I can follow up with Lester saying, then you are saying that under recitals number four, by what you're saying, it should say approves the design review permit period. You're saying the rest of the sentence is extraneous and has no impact.
Staff is relying on the commission to conform, or confirm the determination that these are within substantial conformance of the approved design with that statement.
So if we make the determination as a group, that to our mind, it does not substantially conform, then we're doing more than design review?
I don't see how it could be seen as more than design review, given that the proposed use is not changing. Staff, that sentence is intended to authorize the design modifications contained in said plans, and maybe inserting that language would be further supportive in the recitals.
Then why did staff pursue an addendum if nothing's changing?
So SEQA requires any informational change to be captured in an addendum. So if there are no new mitigations proposed or identified as a requirement of a modification to a project, or a new project, or if there are no, sorry, I'm trying to remember the SEQA language, and I have my book, but if there's no modifications or no new mitigations triggered by new impacts, so there's no new impacts discovered as a part of the project, and there's no new mitigations required, but informational elements have changed, then you use an addendum to update that document to reflect those informational changes. So staff saw the fact that the design change, being one informational element, secondarily, the original SEQA analysis was done on a model based on a school out of town, this, the, and the resulting mitigations came from that projection. The applicant modified, or I'm sorry, the applicant had a new sound study done to reflect the actual current conditions on the ground, and that sound study resulted in the elimination of a needed mitigation identified in the previous document. That is also captured in the addendum as an informational change. So it's a reduction in the impact.
Thank you.
Anything else? I'm going to open public comment. Is there any public comment?
Well, my name is Brian Russell. I'm an attorney with the firm of Abbott and Kinderman, working with the school, the applicant here. And just to further answer your question, so in this, under SEQA, you have an opportunity to update an existing use permit that's been previously approved, and so that's basically what they're doing here, by adding information so that the baseline is established for future, whatever it might be, that the applicant decides to do on the property, so that there isn't confusion from the approval that happened in 2009, and then a subsequent approval, or subsequent application that might happen in the future, so that there, everyone is on the same page with the project moving forward. And that's what, that's what staff did here with this update in terms of what the use permit has provided.
Any further public comment? Close public comment? Any more discussion?
A couple of questions of staff, if you will, please. It seems to have one, two-story building, and, and all the resolutions previous call for one-story buildings. I realize it's just a mechanical room, but I'm wondering what, what our code says about a second-story mechanical room, when all the resolutions previous to this say one-story structures?
Thank you, Commissioner Pont, and I do appreciate you mentioning this earlier to me in a question, because it allowed me to do some research. In the zoning code definitions, story is defined, it's a rather awkward definition that doesn't quite get to what we need. Surprise. However, however, half-story is also defined, it says, means a partial story under a gable, hip, or gamble roof, of which the wall plates the two opposite exterior walls are not more than four feet above the floor. That's not this situation. However, if you then look to mezzanine, which is often used to house equipment, and the definition of mezzanine says C loft. So then you see, then you, you go to the loft.
And it says C mezzanine.
Exactly. That does occur in our zoning code, but not here, luckily. Loft means floor space directly beneath the roof of a structure raised above the main floor. When the total area of such loft exceeds one-half of the floor area below the loft, it shall be considered a story. So in the situation where the loft is half the building, then it counts as a story. In this situation, it's a, it's a mechanical equipment location.
That's a story, and you're sticking to it.
Thank you. My, I didn't have a lot of concerns, even though I had to wade through all this. Thank you again, Lester. But, but one thing did show up in reading the original mitigated negative declaration. Basically, they did a noise study going both ways. The impacts of the children on the surrounding area and the impacts of the surrounding area on the children. And one thing that did point out that the Nimbus building was 68 feet away from the property line, and they saw a maximum of 80 decibels outside with a tractor 25 feet inside the adjoining property. And that brought up the inside of the building to right at the minimum, the maximum allowed for a school under our current general plan noise and safety guidelines. It looks to me that the new toddler building is 43 feet, 3 inches from the property line, considerably closer. You've got the same tractor 25 feet away. It seems like it's going to exceed the interior noise called for in our general plan. And this is a, a design element. So I, I realize it doesn't fall under the environmental document, but now we're talking about our general plan and the safety element in that general plan. So if it, if that's correct, it seems to me we need to address that somehow in this approval.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Can we address that with an additional condition of approval?
I would, I would hope so, Lester.
Perhaps that's a question for staff.
Essentially, Commissioner Pont is identifying that the project has to comply with the noise ordinance requirements, and there has been a study that identifies a potential for impacts. The, the commission has the authority to condition that, and then the applicants can provide some information as a part of the building permits submitted to detail how they're attenuating noise impacts.
Thank you.
Good catch.
I would, I would be fine with that, because the, the whole item is the, the safety and health of the children, and, you know, those decibel levels are set for the safety and health of the children. So as long as they address that as a condition of the permit, I'm fine.
Well, John, how would you like to make the motion, then?
Well, wait a second. I wanted to say something. I'm sorry, Grace, but I haven't even spoken yet, so I kept my first turn. I was initially kind of worried about everything, but then I found out the changes where I, the changes for the buildings coming together were so logical, and it seemed, I just, it seemed really like a no-brainer to, that, you know, it was, it was improvement. I hadn't thought about what you're thinking of, and I'm really glad you brought that up. I think it's really important, and I'm sure that the health and well-being of the children is primary in, for the, for the applicants as well. And, but I've, I've had, you know, trouble seeing Alex and, and Matt there in this, in this context, because I used to play piano for their dance classes when they were taking ballet, and so I think the...
(laughter)
Well, I think the takeaway...
What's your turn, too, Matt?
We're forced to do, because we only have one sister.
Well, (laugh) well, I would say congratulations to your mom, because I, because of the wonderful, successful young man you've turned out to be, I would, the takeaway is, give your boys ballet lessons.
She's not embarrassing you on purpose.
No, I'm, I'm impressed.
I think she is, Matt.
No, I'm not.
Could you put a t-shirt on next week?
I think it's great.
All right, John, you're ready to make a motion. Are you through now, Bobby?
I am.
I would move the staff recommendation with the addition of a condition that requires the toddler building interior to be under 55 decibels, or at or under 55 decibels.
When the tractors are there.
When the tractors are there, yeah.
Or are they nasty?
I'll second that.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Go to work, guys.
And thank you for reading through all that additional information as well. You guys all get As on your homework assignment.
We have an agenda forecast?
So first, I just want to thank Senior Planner Heacock for wading through thousands of pages of information to get to this point, so that was a significant undertaking by him.
How about the rest of it?
And the commission as well, the commission as well. But you all are familiar with some of the challenges of our files, and while these were not, in some of the state that we have dealt with, it just was a lot to get it all collated in one location. And I will also congratulate the Montessori team, because there were some elements that they had to complete in order to get to this place, and they have done that, and so we are, we are happy to have brought that project before you. Agenda forecast, so the Commission will see we're transitioning away from the current development list provided in the agenda forecast. That was a huge time commitment from staff, and as a result, it often wasn't as up-to-date as it could have been. So with the help of Ms. Gamaro, she's agreed to create the planning project list, keep it up-to-date, and that will be the most current applications under review and submittals under review on every project. So with that, we are eliminating the current development portion of the agenda forecast, and we'll be identifying just the broader commission-assigned projects and council-assigned projects, with the goal of kind of identifying where we are with those milestones and setting some dates, and I will be working on that in the future, similar to the format of the council goals that you all are familiar with. So with that, the agenda forecast is up-to-date, current developments are on the city's website, and larger projects are summarized in the agenda forecast document.
I hope you're going to tell her that we're going to check her out, too, to be sure that she does it right.
Oh, it's already been, we, we are regularly tested with that up-to-date situation.